Good evening, ladies and gen-
I think you are.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the February 28th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council, and I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Jeff Slowey to lead us in the pledge.
All right, if everybody would stand, please. Hand over your heart, and I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, and would you please silence your cellphones if you haven't done that already? And, next item, please.
Next item is roll call. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
Present.
And Mayor Bruins.
Present. And just want to say before we go on to the video statement that we did have a closed session and we have no reportable action. Thank you.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Tuesday, March 5th at 1:00 p.m., and again on Thursday, March 7th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay. Any questions on the agenda from anybody?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, think you carries. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, is a presentation by Sacramento Self-Help Housing regarding the Renters' Help Line.
So, before we get started, I am currently employed as the Deputy Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing, which is a source of income for me, and to avoid the appearance of possible conflict of inference, I'm gonna leave the room.
It's a heck of a thing. My employee has to walk away when I'm gonna talk to you. My name's John Foley. I'm Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. We partner with the city in a variety of ways, as you probably know. Some of you may have gone out with our Outreach Navigator, with Tony, with the Police Department. That's the situation where, when the police are called to a situation with a homeless person, the first thing they'll ask is, "Have you talked to Tony?" And we're proud of the work that you are, and your Police Department, do with us, and the way we're able to be helpful to people that are experiencing homelessness here in town. We also do some housing counseling, where folks who are having a struggle finding a place can come and work with us, and we work on that. The program I want to talk about tonight may be slightly less well-known to you, and so I thought it was important to come and kind of walk through how the Renters' Help Line operates. This is a program you do in partnership with other cities and also the county here in the Sacramento area. When folks are having something happen in their tenancy that they don't understand, this is a place they can call. This is a place certainly where you might refer constituents who call you and wonder what they had to do. We're happy to get those calls. Unfortunately, the last year or so, probably the number one reason people are calling is that their rent was a big increase, and they're freaked out, and they don't know if it's legal, and they don't know what to do. And, of course, we don't have any money, so we can't, you know, rescue the situation. And usually, the landlord has noticed them properly, so it's not like we can tell them, "Oh, no, you don't have to do that." So, we sometimes are in a situation of talking to them about budgeting, talking to them about maybe moving to a less expensive place, reminding them of what, you know, the landlord-tenant responsibilities and rights really are. And it's not as great a conversation as I wish we could have, because, you know, their budget is often maxed out already. A lot of your residents here in town are paying almost more than they can possibly afford to pay in order to stay in town, and so when the rent goes up, it's, you know, it's frustrating. We partner with the Apartment House Association so that we can talk to landlords and get advice from the Apartment House Association folks, Jim Lofgren and that team, if it turns out that somebody hasn't been noticed properly, or a landlord really hasn't handled it well. But occasionally, you know, there actually is something illegal about it all, and then we have a group called Project Sentinel that we partner with, or Legal Services of Northern California, and we can involve them, an attorney can get involved, if there has been something, you know, really wrong happen. Sometimes, a landlord behaves in a way that seems to be discriminatory. We've noticed that particularly when it comes to households with children, that sometimes they'll set up rules or regulations in the apartment complex that seem to be designed specifically to make it awkward for a family with kids to live there. They'll limit their playing time outside, they'll restrict where they can go, they'll require that there always be an adult present when they're outside of the unit, things like that. And so, the attorney can explain to the landlord then what the law really says and get him back on the right track. We have had other kinds of situations where a landlord will not be willing to make an accommodation. You know, folks with disabling conditions are allowed to ask for a special accommodation. They may need a ramp to get up to their apartment. They may have a service animal that they need to have to be able to function properly, and sometimes landlords don't understand that that's a perfectly legal ask, and they have to abide by that. We got, yeah, thank you for catching that. I should've pointed that out. So, we actually have a list of things we do. And rights and responsibilities for tenants and landlords is part of our education. Offering a certain amount of comfort and support is also part of it. Landlords can sometimes be perceived as sort of riding roughshod over a tenant who feels in a very weak position, and so helping them to calm down when they've gotten a notice, or when a repair isn't being made real quickly, and help them to get the tenant to where they can have a conversation in a more mature way with the landlord sometimes can make a big difference than just jumping up and down and, you know, acting as if, you know, the world isn't fair. The world isn't fair, and, you know, you have to kind of understand that sometimes. The discrimination cases are, in some ways, more frustrating, because, you know, people can get into situations and not call us soon enough, and so we've had people actually get evicted who were, it didn't need to happen, but they didn't call us until they'd already gotten the notice. Sometimes, a couple of times that's happened, even here in town, where somebody got behind on their rent. I think the case I remember particularly was a medical situation, and they just didn't talk to the landlord. You know, they got the notice, and they panicked, and they didn't know what to do, and the landlord, we believe, would have actually made an accommodation that allowed them to pay money over time to get caught up, and which, an accommodation we've made many times, but we didn't know soon enough, and so the person actually got evicted. So, we don't always win, unfortunately, in these situations. We do pretty well with languages these days, because you do have some folks that are not fluent in English, and we're able to handle those kind of situations. For that matter, we've had landlords who aren't fluent in English, and so sometimes it's gone both ways, particularly owners of single-family houses sometimes are not native English speakers. What else should I tell you about that? I guess I would just say that it's sort of a continuum of services that we provide, and part of what we always would rather is help somebody to stay housed, rather than have to work with them when they're sleeping out behind McDonald's. And the Renters' Help Line is a way to get involved with somebody who is in danger of going outside and helping them to where they're able to maintain their housing, or where we can help them to relocate if it really can't be sustained right where they are. So, it's a very satisfying program, and we're really pleased that you allow us to operate this here in town. That's probably enough of a presentation, but thank you for letting me come and talk with you.
We have some stats here. Do you want to speak to any of those, or?
You want some of the stats? Well, yeah, I gave them to you so you'd see them. So, like last year, we had, you know, 440, you know, times people from town called us, and a few of the cases, 20, seemed like they were, you know, illegal discriminatory-type situations. So, those got referred to our in-house attorney from Project Sentinel to review, and there were a few cases, I think just 14 last year, that the owner really didn't know what they were doing. They were sort of in over their head, and the Apartment House Association was able to help them understand what their responsibilities were and get them some additional training.
Okay.
There's phone number.
Yeah.
I want to thank you. I mean, it's, the Renters' Help Line has been with us for many, many years.
Yes.
And it does serve a purpose. We have a lot of renters in Citrus Heights, and we want to make sure that our renters have a positive experience living in Citrus Heights, and their landlords have a positive experience, you know, being in Citrus Heights.
Yep.
So, you are the connection between that happening, and we just want to thank you for your service, John.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Bye-bye.
Thanks.
There's a little delay on the TVs.
Okay. Does someone have to bring back our council member, or does she know to come in? Thank you, Chief. Okay. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, let's start with Councilmember Daniels. Do you have anything to report?
Sure. Did have a meeting today with the Air Board, not a whole lot to report back on. The main gist of it was moving forward with the area identified in Florin as one of the 10 selected throughout California to have a special designation applied to it, and therefore funds that'll go to cleaning up that area. And that's really about it. Other than that, I'm going to kind of go out on a limb here, and I have seen and been hearing and been receiving many, many complaints about the negative impacts of the church at Antelope and Rosswood, where the homeless gather to then be taken to places to sleep for the evening. And I want that program to be positive as much as possible, but it is quite evident that the issue has spilled over into the neighborhoods and become a very negative impact on the neighborhoods. And I think that's actually somewhat of a logical conclusion in that if they are to meet there at 5:00 in the evening and then get dropped off there again at 6:00 in the morning, or however it works, it would seem logical that they'll just stay in the area in proximity to that church, waiting to go there again that evening. And so, a lot of people in that neighborhood are complaining. A lot of things are happening within the park areas, and so I think what we've done is tried to do something noble, and I think that it is noble, and in the process, we've negatively impacted our residents that live in that area. So, I would like us to maybe examine moving that, if possible, and I don't know if that is possible, but I think the logical place to move that to would be here, City Hall. We have a large area on the backside of City Hall that I think could be used to do that. I wouldn't want us to have something set up again where it isn't anything other than necessarily a location where that population, if they want somewhere to stay that evening, comes and then goes after they are brought back in the morning. So, I don't know how to move forward with that necessarily. I don't know if any of the other council members care to take that any further also, but I do know that we are unfairly negatively impacting our residents over in that area.
Let me just add to that comment. Thank you, sir. I have been approached as well by a couple of people in that neighborhood, and so I have been working with the chief to increase police presence during those drop-off and pickup hours. I haven't heard anything further since police presence has increased. So, and I'm not sure how much longer the sanctuary program is going. Isn't it about done for the year?
It's finished now.
It has, it is completed for the year. Okay, so, it's something, yeah. So-
But we'll do it again next year.
Yeah, something to bear in mind for next year is that we need to be aware of the impact it has had on the neighborhood and be maybe a little bit prepared. So, but thank you for bringing that up.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry. I was mistaken under the impression that we were going one more month.
We're done.
It's gonna get damn cold. I don't understand why we're running this through February, but-
Well, it's a matter of ability. It's a matter of capability of housing, churches that will step up to participate in the program.
Then I'm wondering if maybe it's time for the city to then maybe look at doing something over the next month or two, or whatever, but I guess that's a different day.
Okay, thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Jeff Slowey, please.
Thank you. So, I'll try not to be too long. February 15th, a bunch of us were at the grand opening of the California Fish Grill. If you all like fresh fish, great place over there. It's where Mo's used to be, Sunrise in Madison. Kudos to the staff on the 20th. They had an open house for the Signalized Intersection Safety Improvement Project. If you don't know what that is, Greenback and Auburn, they've had accidents and pedestrian incidents, so we are looking at a project there to install pedestrian safety fence, if you will, in the median. And there were several examples out there, and they're looking for public input, because I know a lot of people aren't happy with the one that's on Greenback right now. So, we're looking to do something slightly different, but they're looking for feedback. 21st Secog met, nothing major out of that. I will say the one project that is, I think, is really exciting, if you saw it in the paper or the news, SAC State is actually prototyping two autonomous buses. They only hold eight people, but it will be strictly on campus, because today, legally within California, an autonomous vehicle is not allowed on the street. You have to have somebody sitting actually behind the wheel. But I think the most interesting part about this is each of those vehicles were made in two days on a 3D printer out of plastic. Now, obviously not the engines and the tires, but 90% of the parts were made on a 3D printer. It was just, we got to see it happen, and amazing what they can do. A new frozen yogurt place, Menche's, opened also right, pretty close, just down the street from the California Fish Grill, right next to Dos Coyotes. Earlier this week, a bunch of staff from CHPD, some from the city side, met with some folks from the city of Menifee. They're actually, they're not looking at, they are going to form their own police department, and what stood out in my mind is, you know, CHPD was created 12 years ago, and it's still the model for new cities who want to create a new police department. They came up here to get the skinny. Obviously, you know, the current city manager, former police chief, created that. We obviously have another fine, capable chief in Ron Lawrence, but they were really here to get the down and dirty on the, you know, the good and the bad of what to do, and they've got a little different situation, because they're under PEPRA, which is a different retirement program. They didn't, we didn't have that, so they've got a couple more challenges. Last night, tipper cop occurred over at, yes, whoops, where was that?
Texas Road?
Black Angus, thank you. I was having a-
Black Angus, right.
I couldn't remember. And, you know, the money that was raised for Special Olympics, but it was a good event. The public was very generous. Today, the Library Board met. Nothing major came out of there. Still working on Sylvan Oaks Library. Will be closed for another several months while they refurbish it, so I'm looking forward to when that reopens. And then, last, well, two things. Saturday, there's an opening of a new business in Citrus Town Center. If you don't own a dog, you probably don't care, but it's called Ben's Bark Place. It's actually a pretty neat, slightly expensive, but it's a neat, has a lot of organic pet food in it. And then, just to tag off Councilmember Daniels' comments, I hear ya, but the one thing I have to say is today, I was downtown for a meeting, and I happened to drive by SAC City Hall, and-
It's incredible.
The only thing I can say is there wasn't an inch of space completely around that building that wasn't taken up by tents and other things. And the only thing I could think of, you know, granted, it's a difficult topic, but my only impression there was, you know, thinking of citizens having to go in and do business in that building, and what you had to pass through to get in there. And SAC City actually is allowing the homeless to camp on city property from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but then they have to, they can't, I'm sorry.
Other way around.
Other way around. They have to technically be gone from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It was 4:30, so obviously they didn't tell time too well, but it's just interesting, and I don't ever want to see that occur in this town, for the record.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton?
Well, not much to report. I got to sit down and meet with the Cable Commission and kind of get an overview of what's going on and things that are coming up before the next board meeting in March. And I actually sent my sons over to Menche's, and they had a great time. They got their free yogurt. My oldest got his face painted, and it's a really, really fun environment. It's really cool, and I'm looking forward to taking them there every week as a treat, as long as they're, you know, keeping their grades up.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Monday night at the Sacramento Regional Transit Board Meeting, we approved the redesign of the entire bus network in the region. It's called SAC RT Forward. Of course, the top-performing routes, like the number one that goes down Greenback here in our city, remain basically the same, because they're, they work. And, but low-performing routes either were reconfigured, eliminated, or new routes were created. I'm not going to go into too much detail on it. I know one of the major themes you'll find is there's more weekend service, more frequent service, no more hour buses. I think the longest wait is, a few buses will be 45 minutes out, like areas like Rio Linda. There's not a need for much frequency right now. More late-night service, and going to more places, and Monday through Sunday will be all the same, seven-day-a-week routes, so a lot simpler. I think maybe what we need to do to understand the impact at Citrus Heights is ask Regional Transit to come here and just talk specifically on what the board decided as far as the bus routes here. We will keep the Smart Ride, and these changes should take effect around the 1st of June of this year. So, that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask that you work with us-
City Clerk, to, if there's some documentation that we could link from our website, so that people can-
Very good, yeah. There's actually a paging land on SAC RT Forward that goes over this. Lot of great public input. They went overboard in getting input from riders, stakeholders, community groups. In fact, I think the night I was voting, were they at Area 10, Mr. Costa, or do you? Yeah, so they were, the night I was hearing public testimony, they were out doing a presentation here in Citrus Heights. So, kudos to RT, and I think this is gonna, they're predicting it'll improve ridership. It's really made things a lot simpler. We have bus routes from the, I think, 1970s when they started. Things have changed, and one of the things that's changed, as you all know, is traffic. And so, connections just didn't work because of that. Enough said, I think we should, it would be nice to have a presentation if we could.
Okay, good. Anything else?
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so the Regional Sanitation Board has not met since our last council meeting, so I have nothing to report on that. I would like to announce, however, that our city, our Police Department was one of the top three departments in the state to be considered for the Community Policing James Q. Wilson Award, and we've won this award twice before, which is unprecedented in police departments throughout the United States. And I had the pleasure of meeting, being part of the presentation, to the gentleman who came down to interview and take a look at our program. It had to do with our Navigator program that our Police Department has to service the homeless in Citrus Heights here. And what was amazing, I'd say there's probably 25 or 30 people in our Police Department conference room, was the collaboration among not only the city, our Police Department, but the community. We had people there from the faith-based community. We had the Saturday Market Place there. We had the Chamber there, and others as well. And so, it was just an honor to be there. It was about an hour and a half, hour and 45-minute process. I couldn't believe it, but we came in second. I just can't believe we were beat out, because it was such a phenomenal presentation, and the service is so phenomenal as far as what we do for the homeless. And, you know, as council members, we are always, even yet today, getting emails from the public wanting to know what we're gonna do about homelessness. And we are doing things about homelessness. We have, we have results. We have people who are getting housed, that are getting jobs, that are getting services. And Councilmember Daniels, or, excuse me, Council, Vice Mayor Slowey made the point about what it looks like in downtown Sacramento, and I gotta say, I feel sheltered in Citrus Heights, because today I had an appointment down on Garden Highway, and as you get off I-5, right there by the, is it Sutter Foundation? Sutter Foundation, the homeless people are lined up. They line the street with their tents, because they've been, they have been basically flooded out from their normal campgrounds along the river. And it was kind of, it was definitely a reality check. It was kind of mind-blowing for me to see what looked like a legitimate campground in one sense. So, I just want to thank our Police Department for all that they do. I want to thank Self-Help Housing for giving us Tony Morgan. She is- Pardon me? Pardon me?
Sharing, or-
Oh, sharing, okay, fine, sharing. But she is, she's actually an employee of Self-Help Housing, and we contract for her services full-time. So, we pay for her to be our navigator here in Citrus Heights full-time, and she's been here a little over a year. She's the third navigator we've had as the program has gotten, has matured and been built from its inception. And, yes, we have homeless issues. We will probably always have homeless issues, but we have a program in place that is seeing results. And so, just hats off to you, Chief Lawrence, and your team. And then, just one other thing, since I'm in the Police Department, we, our Chief of Police will be installed in about 10 days as the President of the California Police Chiefs Association, an honor that our former Police Chief held, Chris Boyd, when he was Police Chief. And I don't know if two chiefs for one city has ever happened before, but we just seem to be making new records. And so, we'll be very excited to honor you and see that happen. Thank you. And that is all I have to report. So, let's go on to the next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the City Clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted time.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll give our speakers five minutes. I have two speaker sheets, so if anybody else wants to speak, please fill out a sheet and give it to our City Clerk. Our first speaker will be Mr. Bob Barker, Baker, excuse me, Mr. Baker. I know Bob Barker is someone else.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm here to talk about speed bumps on our street, Jerry Glenn Avenue and Holly Drive. I was here before, about six months ago. I haven't heard from nobody, and it's getting worse over there. I know you guys are tied up doing other projects and everything, but I'd love you to take a look at it and see if you can put speed bumps on it. Mr. Ball would have been here tonight to talk about Holly Drive, but his daughter-in-law went into labor, and he's having a new grandson right now, so he'll miss this one. And, but we'd like you to take it in consideration and look at it again. We haven't heard from nobody since six months ago.
Okay.
So, please take a look at it, and that's all I gotta say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker. I will pass this on to our Traffic Unit and our Transportation Department, and we will take a look at that street and see what we can do with it.
Okay, appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Coming back. Our next speaker is Dante Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Want to say thank you to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council staff. I'm here, my name's Dante Williams. I work for Verizon Wireless. I'm part of the small cell team. And the reason I showed up here today is I wanted to talk a little bit more about what- to talk a little bit more about what Verizon has been doing with our new technologies. And of course, you know, Sacramento happened to be one of our first 5G cities in, not just in the United States, but in the world. So we're pushing forward with technology to make sure that the mobile broadband future that we all desire, I heard you talking about autonomous vehicles and 3D printing, comes to fruition. And the reason I'm here is because we're particularly interested in trying to work with every jurisdiction, not just the cities, you know, the big cities, the small cities, the towns, because we understand that this technology is going to have to be ubiquitous in order for things like autonomous vehicles to work, things like telemedicine to work, things like public safety technology advancements to work, smart cities, and the broadband, the mobile broadband network, the small cell network is going to be the backbone on which that's built. So, you know, I'll just stick to some basic points, you know, just some advancements in technology that we've made, some of the economic benefits, and some of the public safety benefits that we'll see. First of all, in our technology, we've worked really hard in both 4G and now with 5G to make the technology much smaller. There are some things in the code currently, as I was reading through, that I think need to have another look, because the technology has changed so rapidly that most of the technology that we're deploying is small enough that we believe undergrounding actually would not be preferable. You're actually going to add more equipment to underground than less. So we wanted to have a stakeholders' meeting with some of the city staff to talk about the code. The other thing that the technology is doing is it's getting combined. So for 5G, there's actually an antenna and radio that are combined into one, one device, so you wouldn't actually have a secondary device. And you can see that actually deployed in Sacramento today. It's out there in the field. Some of the economic benefits that I want to touch on are really, I mean, sort of obvious. You know, we've seen when smartphones were invented, brand-new industries pop up, things like apps, social media, and we're moving to a mobile-first, you know, deployment. So people are no longer going to their, their computers or their desktops for information, ride-hailing services. They're going to mobile. And most of your internet searches now are going over mobile. The other thing this will do, we believe this technology will make cities smarter, so smart grids. There's a technology V to X, vehicle to light standards, vehicles talking to other cars to make sure there's a proximity warning, vehicles watching out for pedestrians. So as sensors and IOT increase, you're going to have to have the small cell network, a traditional macro network can't handle that much capacity, that many sensors. So we believe that it's really important that the small cell networks here to also power the fourth industrial revolution. We honestly don't know what else will be invented on 5G. We know that we want to put the technology out there and let the cities innovate, let the end-users innovate, and open up these new paths for revenue generation. Also, we've seen cities do things to reduce expenditures, like put out smart trash cans so that they don't have to do truck rolls to every garbage can. They only go to the ones that are full. We've seen cities do things with smart road sensors, smart lighting, to reduce their utility bills. So there's an opportunity, once that network is deployed, smart metering to prevent truck rolls, to check meters, because now you can deploy smart metering. So we've seen cities actually reduce costs by using our tech, using the network to deploy technology and smart infrastructure. And then I'll talk about public safety. So one of the things that always comes up is, is it safe? And I'm not the safety specialist, but what I can tell you is that we have a FCC license. We have billions of dollars in spectrum that if we don't operate within our FCC standard, we're putting those at risk. So we are really incentivized to make sure that we're in compliance. The other thing is, are you safe without mobile? People don't think about that. These calls must go through. Upwards of 76% of calls to emergency services are coming over mobile. So it's gone from a convenience to something that is required. It's a utility. People have to have mobile services in emergency situations. So, you know, we're trying to make sure that the network is robust, and I'll just wrap up by saying that we really want to work with the city. We really want to sit down and make sure that the code is compliant and is pervaded in a way that actually robustly pushes forward this investment that Verizon's wanting to make into Citrus Heights to bring us into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
No problem.
Okay. And is there anybody else from the audience who'd like to speak?
Mayor, I do have one additional speaker card from Michael Lagromasino.
Okay. Mr. Lagromasino, please state your name for the public.
Good evening. My name's Michael Lagromasino. I'm the president, current president of the Reach Board and Neighborhood Association Number Three, and tonight I'm representing the Reach Board and all the neighborhood associations. On the Fourth of March this coming Monday at 6:30, the Reach Board is, and the Neighborhood Association are sponsoring our annual potluck and training session. This year, our guest speaker is going to be Loriann Um. She is more or less, trying to remember her exact title, but she is currently employed by the city of Rancho Cordova, and one of her primary jobs is to create neighborhood associations within that city. Their concept is a little differently than ours, and so we're interested in hearing what she has to say. My purpose here tonight is to personally invite all five members of the city council. I've sent all of you an email, and Mayor Bruin, thank you very much for replying. Members of the city and their staff that wish us to attend are also invited, as well as members of the police department, if they wish to attend, they're welcome to come on over. As I said, our meeting starts at 6:30. We do have from 6:00 to 6:30 a meet and greet. 6:30, we plan to start the program and have a very short meeting at the beginning, and then get right into the main, one of the main purposes, to enjoy the, the food that folks in the city have put together for us. And then after that, we will have the meeting with Loriann Um. And I hope that all of you can attend, or someone can attend from the police department and from the city, if at all possible. I just wanted to personally invite everyone tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, it will be at the community center.
And I just put it in my calendar, and I think I invited the entire city council.
You did.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I've already found it. Is there anybody else from the audience who'd like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close public comment and call for the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay. I just, before we go forward, I want to announce that I have a conflict because with item seven, because my property is within 500 feet of the Electric Greenway project, we're going to, we're going to leave it on the consent calendar, but I am abstaining on that one item as we move forward. So having said that, any other questions on the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar noting that you're abstaining on number seven.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, and I abstain on seven. Thank you. Okay. With that having been taken care of, let's go on to the next item.
The next item is public hearing, number 10. The subject is public hearing regarding the composition of the city's voting districts pursuant to Elections Code. And staff is recommending that the council hold the first two public hearings to receive input on the composition and number of voting districts, and request any additional information needed for the public hearing, which will be scheduled for March 14th.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. On January 10th, the council adopted a resolution declaring your intention to transition to district-based voting rather than elections at large. Tonight, I'd like to introduce National Demographics Corporation. This is Doug Johnson and Shalise Tilton. They're here to explain during our first public hearing, just a brief introduction to districting, as well as how the public can get involved with the drawing of possible draft maps. And so with that, I'll turn it over to NDC. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. And, and Mayor and members of council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Again, I'm Doug Johnson. I'm joined by Shalise Tilton. I'll start off and then hand off to her. Just very briefly, NDC has been doing this work since 1979. We've worked with cities, school districts, healthcare districts, water districts, all over the state, and we're very happy to be here working with Citrus Heights and looking forward to working through this project with you. The project process is set up by a state statute, and it's a little unusual in that our goal is to get to maps, but actually the, tonight and the next hearing, we're not actually presenting maps. These are kind of informational, educational sessions, really to get the public up to speed and to hear from the public what they want to see in lines before we start drawing any official city lines or having any official draft maps. So we kick off tonight. The same presentation will be delivered March 14th in the second kind of informational, educational session, looking for input. And as you'll see, there's going to be the opportunity for the public to submit maps as well. So there'll be a period where we kind of pause, and we give the public time to draw maps and work on that. And then those maps will all be released at least a week prior to the third hearing, May 23rd, and that'll be the first hearing on the draft maps. So all the maps from the public, a couple of maps that we'll add to the mix, kind of round out your options, will all be posted a week before that, and that'll be the first hearing. It's important to note that no one draft map ever, well, usually becomes the final map. Usually, there's a lot of discussion. There's revising. There's fine tuning. Sometimes there's, take the west part of this map and the east part of that map and put them together. So that really is just starting the discussion. People should not consider those, any one of those draft maps a final map. And again, under state law, we have to have two, at least two hearings on that. So we're looking at May 23rd and June 13th, with looking at the ordinance being introduced and the maps really selected at the end of that June 13th hearing, with a second reading in June 27th. Now, we're a little bit weird in the timing, because under districts, as there are now, there'll be elections every two years, but now each district is up for every four years. So there'll be an election in 2020 under this new map. But only some of the districts will be up in 2020, and then because of the weird place where we are in the ti, in the decade, this 2020 census data comes out in 2021. So some of the districts we draw will, may actually be redrawn before they ever hold an election, because after the census, the council will look at the lines. It's usually just a fine tuning, especially in an area that is not growing very rapidly in one part. They would throw it off. But it is worth noting that the districts that are up in 2022 will actually be revisited before they're ever used in elections. In terms of the criteria and the goals for what we're looking at, there are two sets of rules for how we're drawing lines. On the left are the federal laws. I call these the must-dos. We must have an essentially equal population in each district, and that is equal population, it's total population counted by the 2010 census. So we know it's a little old, but that's the, the court directive, is to use that data. And it is total people counted by the census. It's not registered voters. It's not eligible voters. It is human beings counted in that census. And then we have to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which really boils down to if there's a neighborhood that is heavily with the law calls a protected class, which means Latinos, African Americans, Asian Americans, or Native Americans. So if you have, if you have a neighborhood that's heavily one of those groups, that neighborhood cannot be divided in a way that dilutes their voting strength. And we obviously will be working with legal counsel to make sure that maps comply with that, or to alert you if any maps raise any concerns about that. And then the third must-do is no racial gary-mandering. So you know, when I talked about the Federal Voting Rights Act, I talked about neighborhoods. Ms. Tilton's going to show you some maps where you can see city block by city block estimates of ethnicity, and the, each block will be colored just to show that in. We can't draw districts based on those colors. You can't take a pen and draw around the certain shadings, because then race is becoming the predominant factor. And, and race cannot be the predominant factor, as a rule under federal law. So that's why we talk about neighborhoods that are heavily one group. We want to focus on neighborhoods throughout this process. So those are the must-dos, and those are the legal requirements. Where the decisions really come down is looking at what we traditionally call traditional redistricting principles. These are goals. So these are things we're trying to achieve in the map. And your goal is to find a map that best balances these. Especially with the equal population requirement, it's impossible to fully meet all these goals. So you're really looking to find a map that best balances them. And these things, these are things like communities of interest that we'll come back to in a, in a few minutes. Roughly speaking, that's neighborhoods, but there's some other considerations there. We want the lines to be compact and contiguous and to follow visible borders. All three of those are so that it's easier for the voters to know what district they're in. If they like a candidate and want to go out and knock on doors for a candidate, we want it to be easy for them to know which doors to knock on. It's a lot easier if it's a major road to major road than if it goes up this alley and over that side street. So again, these, these three are goals, and the equal population requirement plays havoc with these three goals in particular. But they are goals we're aiming to achieve in the map. Then we want to do what we describe as respecting the voters' choices. And this boils down to, to the degree possible, and it's important to emphasize this is a goal, not a requirement, we want each current council member to be in a separate seat, and that often tends to raise hackles, or people ask why, and it's really for the voters. The issue here is that if each council member's in a separate seat, then the voters get to decide which council members have earned reelection. If multiple council members are in one seat, well, it doesn't matter what the voters think. If the voters think two council members deserve reelection, but they're in the same seat, tough voters, you only get one. And so to the degree possible, this is something we try to do within the, the full picture of the maps. Then planned future growth is mentioned at the bottom there, just so it's not a surprise. As I mentioned, these lines will only be used in 2020, so there's not a lot of growth that's going to take place. In 2021, if you do know an area that's going to grow quickly over the 10 years after that, I don't know that's necessarily true here, but if there is something that you're aware of in 2021, you can under-populate that district, because those lines will be in place for 10 years. So that's the criteria. We only mentioned that last one, so it's not a surprise in 2021. It's not really a consideration here. And with that, I'll hand off to Ms. Tilton to get you into some of the specifics of your city.
So the total population?
Let's see, the total population for the city, and again, this is using the 2010 census data, which is data that we must use in order to be able to certify the, that we have equal population, and it's the court, it's the, it's the number that the courts recognize. So our total population is, our number we're going by is 83,301. So once we divide the districts into five equal districts, we'll have a, each will contain 16,660 residents. We are able to have some deviation, but no more than 10% overall deviation. So the least populated and the highest populated, there can be no more of a 10% deviation. We try to, to stay away from that 10% number. What we're showing here in the top category is that total population, broken down by our, our protected class groups. And then the second category we're showing is the citizen voting age population. And this is important, once the maps are drawn, it is one indicator of how well of a job we've done at keeping these, those neighborhoods with a high concentration of protected class groups together. So when the maps are drawn, you will have similar data that's presented here, but you'll have a column for each of the five districts. So you'll have a map, and then accompanying the map will be the demographic summary, and it will have five columns, and it will show you how each of the districts are coming out as far as percentages for citizen voting age population, and other information as well. So right now, we're showing you voter registration, voter turnout for 2016 and 2014. That's, could be a community of interest. It's typically not more. We're going to be focusing on neighborhoods. Voter registration is typically not one of the guiding elements in drawing districts, but we do need to make sure that we follow that first category of total population for equality. What we're showing here is the voter concentration. So this is the, the citizen voting age population, and you'll see it's abbreviated by CVAP. This is that second column I showed on the previous slide. So these are citizens who are 18 years of age and eligible to vote, not necessarily registered to vote, but eligible to vote. And what we're showing you here is the color-coded concentration levels for your Latino citizen voting age population. So we don't really have any large geographic concentrations of any of the protected class groups. We do see some concentration in the northwest area of I-80. Here's a map showing the Asian American eligible voter concentrations. And again, we don't really have any high geographic concentrations, but you can see the area that's just on the opposite side of the area that's just on the opposite side of I-80. And the black or African American eligible voter concentrations, we see southwest, a concentration in the southwest area, it's a little bit more than the rest of the city. But again, there are no large geographic concentrations of any of the protected class So my job here today, and I know it's early in the process, and at the next public hearing, you'll be hearing a similar presentation, but my job here today is to hear from the community of what your communities of interests are. And the reason why this is important is, you know, as demographers, we can look at maps and things might make sense to us to keep certain areas together, and it, we may be completely off-base because we don't walk these streets. Many of you have walked most all of these streets, and you know the areas, you know what neighborhoods fit together, what don't fit together. If there's areas that coalesce with one another over a certain issue, maybe a political issue, or traffic issue, water issues, maybe school attendance zones, those are the types of things that we want to hear from, groups that, neighborhoods that should be kept together, and maybe neighborhoods that don't fit together, that maybe be better if they were separated into different districts. And then on the other side of that, sometimes there are communities that want, don't want to be, that want to intentionally be divided into more than one district so they can have more than one voice. I always give the example, I live in a retirement community. So we have 1,400 homes in the retirement community. If my city were go-to districts, I would advocate for having two separate districts. So those of us who live in the north have one representative, those who live in the south of our retirement community have a second representative. So when we hold our neighborhood association forums, we're having two candidates that come and two that listen to our issues. So there is times when communities want to be divided and have more than one representative. So it's not necessarily natural you keep them all together, it's really the input from the community and from what makes sense for your particular situation. We also see that often with retail centers, or if there's a, if there's an area of your city, and we'll go, we'll give you some examples of that, where you may want to have more than one representative touch, maybe a major retail area. Here's a list of some of the possible community features that define your neighborhoods, your communities of interests. And obviously, natural dividing lines, creeks, ridges, waterways, dividing lines such as highways, these types of things are what we're hearing from. And sometimes you have a major freeway going through your town. Some cities prefer to have those separated into separate districts, and some want to blend and cross over so that there's not a separation between the east and the west And then we talk about shared demographic characteristics. Once we prepare the maps, we'll also include additional information on demographics. Some of that information can include language spoken at home, education levels, if there's homeownership versus renters in a particular area, we'll show you the percentage of concentration for each particular district. That's often useful in helping you to see how well, how good of a job you've done at keeping a community together. Here are some sample compact maps. These are typical maps that were drawn with mostly the guiding force being the equal population. These, even though the maps don't look perfectly square as you would imagine, or perfectly even as you would imagine, it's because we have to, again, abide by equal total population. So obviously, in cities, some areas are more densely populated than others. We're also bound by the census block geography. So sometimes the lines, you might be drawing a straight line, and we're going to have to make that line a little jagged because the actual federal census block is drawn in a jagged way. So we have to follow the census block geography once we get down to drawing the maps, and we'll guide you through how that is done. But these two are good examples of fairly compact maps that are drawn, mostly with the guiding factor of being just equal population and not many other policy decisions included. These are more policy-driven maps. So in the upper left-hand corner, we're showing the city of Pasadena. Colorado Boulevard, all of us are familiar with the Rose Parade, goes along Colorado Boulevard, but it was also a major retail and entertainment center along Colorado Boulevard. So the time when the districts were first drawn, they were undergoing redevelopment of that area, it was suffering, and many believe because they drew the maps so that each of the districts touch a portion of Colorado Boulevard. So each of the council members has at stake in Colorado Boulevard and how it was developed, and many believe it was, that was one of the attributes that made that area so successful. South Pasadena took a little bit different approach, and they wanted a cross-section of various different neighborhoods for each of the districts. So they did more of a vertical line draw and cross-section of each of the, of the city when they drew the districts. So you can see those districts, with the exception of four and five that are stacked, but they go from north to south, north to south. Central Unified is a school district in Fresno, and they, their district boundary includes a very high-concentrated area, populated area in the upper right-hand corner, and then large urban area. So they decided to draw the districts so that each would have a little bit of both. They'd have the populated area and urban area. Oh, I'm sorry, rural area, thank you. I'm speaking in circles here. So what we've done is, we are wanting the public to participate in this process, and we've created a public participation kit. I want to just explain quickly what you're seeing here on the map. What we've done is we've taken, we've taken groups of census blocks and created population units, and the numbers in each of those dashed little blocks show the number of residents in that particular area. So this way, a person could take this paper map and draw their lines and actually either use a calculator, or later I will show you the Excel spreadsheet. You can do it, and if you're familiar with Excel, you can use the Excel spreadsheet to see how good of a job you're doing in keeping it populated with the 16,660 in each of your five districts. So we find that this format is very successful in many of, most of the agencies that we work at that have public participation kits, once people start drawing them, they like drawing the maps, and many are able to just do the calculations just using a calculator, and some like to do the Excel spreadsheet, which I'll show you that goes along with it. So once a resident wants to participate and start drawing a map, and what we like about this public participation kit is it allows everyone to have a say in the process. So once someone draws a map and submits it, we will take the map and have it professionally produced. So all the maps, once we do present the maps to the city council, will all look the same. They'll be professionally produced by NDC, and they will each have a demographic summary. So, and you can submit it a number of ways. You can just do solid lines or colored lines, and you can take a picture of it with your cellphone and email it in, you can drop it off here at City Hall to the city clerk. So there are a number of ways that you can submit your maps.
Can I ask you a question? What constitutes a census block?
Census block is similar to your street block.
Okay, just natural street division?
Yeah, I will show you on the interactive map, and you can see on these faint lines here, you can see, I believe these are census blocks.
That's what this map indicates.
The lighter colored lines. Oh, those are streets, okay. Well, I'll show you where you can see the census blocks. Sometimes they don't make sense, how the federal census decided to draw them, but many times it'll be, you know, similar to a street block. But these are groupings of census blocks. These are what we've termed population units. This is a snapshot of the, if you were to use the Excel spreadsheet. You can see in the right-hand corner, there's a map that looks very similar to the population unit counts that I just showed you, but each of these are numbered consecutively, they're just numbered one through probably 100. And so what you do, once you've drawn your map, then say that you, say if you were, had a district that included just those right-hand districts, and those are numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, and those are in your District 1, then you open up the Excel spreadsheet, and you say for population units, 1 through 9, and I assign those to District, whatever number, District 5. And then it would calculate for you and give you an idea of how you're doing as far as total population and the citizen voting age population. So at this point, and I'll be taking notes throughout the public hearing, and after the public hearing, we're posing the question to you, what do you consider your neighborhoods? Are your communities of interest, do you prefer the areas be kept together, or that you have multiple representation? And are there any other factors that you'd like us to consider when we're drafting and choosing maps? I do have some, I can go into more detail on the Excel spreadsheet. I also have an interactive map viewer that I mentioned. And the interactive map viewer is a way for you to zoom in very closely to see the census blocks. I can bring that up for you if you like, show you quickly what that is. But once the maps, let me bring that up quickly.
While you're doing that question, I just want to make sure I heard right. Even though this is based on the California Voters' Right Act, as well as the federal voting rights, we're talking about individuals who are of the voting age, not necessarily currently registered, or ever registered for that matter.
Correct. When you're looking at this, at the strength of your protected class group, you should look at the citizen voting age population.
Thank you.
So those that would be eligible to vote, you're absolutely right. What I'm displaying on the screen for you right now is an outline of the census blocks in each of your cities. And within those are the population counts. So you can see in the, in the center, we have some very large census blocks, and then in the upper northwest corner, some very dense census blocks. But each of those blocks gives the numbers, and we like to point this out because, now, on the right-hand corner, I'm unclicking census blocks now, and I'm showing you the population units. The reason why I'm showing you this is because if you don't like where we drew these population units, you can certainly use the census blocks and just let us know where you'd like a population unit divided. So when you're using that paper map, if you don't like the ones that we used, you can use and draw lines along these census blocks shown here, and we'll be happy to draw your map accordingly. Once we have maps submitted, they'll start to show up on this interactive map viewer. So with this interactive map viewer, once I list layers, it'll start showing the maps. And once the maps are published, and then you can zoom in very closely, you can even write in, type in your address. The other nice thing about this is you can change the imagery. So instead of streets, you can show, and I'm going to take off that, that gets a little busy when we have the census blocks on here. So you can zoom in and see where your street is, and once a map is submitted and it's on here, then if you're not sure which district you're in, you can either type in your address or zoom in more closely. And I'm just changing the base map, so it's less busy for us. Show the streets here. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and either before or after the public hearing.
Do we have any questions from the council before I open the public hearing?
Yes.
Just clarify, so we can change a population unit, but we can't change a census block?
Correct, yeah.
So even if it helps fix the numbers, can't change that, we got to deal with that difficulty and figure it out?
Right. If it's, if it happens to be a zero-populated census block, which you have a few, we're able to do that, we're able to split a census block. But yeah, for the most part, we must follow the census block geography.
I noticed those, and those are usually commercial areas where nobody's living, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, if there are no other questions, this is a public hearing, so I want to open it to the public. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to come forward to speak at this time? Yes, sir, please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Ted Costa. I'm a director of the San Juan Water District. And, and look, I didn't fill out a speaker form.
You may still speak.
Because when I'm the chairman of the meeting, I don't require that people do it because the court has said people don't have to do it.
Feel free to speak.
And I make, I make the body destroy them after, because there are some people that won't speak if they know you're going to have their number. And for those people, they should be protected, and that's why I didn't have nothing personal with any of you folks. Now, I get two hats here. We, I'm the chairman of the legal committee there, and we are looking at district elections too, so I'm prompting your meetings. I'm not here to run candidates for the city council or anything, I'm just, just here to see what you're doing. But I also have another hat. When that statewide initiative was drafted, I was the chairman of the drafting committee. There were 10, 15 different groups of all walks. It was Democrats and Republicans and minority groups and eligible voters and everything. And, and I know a little bit about it. And I'm telling you, when people talk about community of interest, you are a community of interest. There isn't. The reason why there's a community of interest in there, and somehow it's been skewed, and I hope someone takes it to court and gets it straightened out, but it was because of Placer County. It was because the people of Granite Bay who are in Placer County don't have anything in common with the people at Lake Tahoe, be it if you, if you require a county has to be all together, then it's not fair. So you could cut Placer County in half. That doesn't mean you could go start chopping Citrus Heights up. I want to leave you one other thing. Well, first of all, I'll give you my advice because you've asked for advice. If I were doing it, I would cut this city into four districts, and I would have one wide-open district, and that would be the mayor's district. And it works real good because someone runs for a city council, and they're for a while, and then they figure they want to run for mayor, and they could run for mayor, or get personality conflicts and everything, and let the two people with the personality conflict just go ahead and run for mayor and see who wins. And then you'll have a board that's, that's got some unity to it. And the final thing, and I don't want to get into your business, sir, but if you go to the registrar voters, they'll draw your maps. Free. You could ask them for four maps, they'll give you four different maps, they'll bring, you choose the map you like, redistricting is done. But that's, nothing against you folks, just telling you what's available from our government. Thank you very much, okay?
Thank you, Ted.
Bye-bye.
All right. Do we have anybody else from the public who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And do we have any questions from the council?
We have a timeline. We have a timeline. I know we won't get anything back till May, but, you know, I respect the process, but at the end of the day, I want to see the maps. So I would hope that some people actually take the time to suggest that. You know, I'm going to look at it, and, you know, what Mr. Costa brought up, as a council, we had briefly talked about, so, you know, don't know where I stand on that, but certainly an option.
Okay. All right, that's.
Very educational evening. Thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate you coming tonight, and I'm sure we'll see you again. All right, thank you. Okay. There's nothing, basically, our action tonight was just to, and the staff recommends that we're holding a public hearing, so that's what we have done. And so now we'll go on to the next item.
The next item is regular calendar, item 11. The subject is the second reading of an ordinance amending the contract between the Board of Administrative Stration of the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights. So the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Rhonda Rivera, Assistant City Manager. Back in January, I came before the council with the introduction of an intent to amend the contract with CalPERS and the introduction and first reading and waiving of an ordinance. The purpose of the amendment and ordinance is to amend the contract with CalPERS to allow for the cost-sharing by our public safety employees who are in the classic plan and are paying 3% towards the employer's contribution with CalPERS to be done on a pre-tax basis. We did the first introduction and reading, January 24th. We're now bringing back the We did the first introduction and reading January 24th, we're now bringing back the ordinance to amend the contract today. Should council adopt the amendment, then the amendment will become effective on March 30th, and then it will go into effect with the pay period that begins on March 31st. Are there any questions?
No. Anybody from the council?
I'll move the item.
No, it's regular. We have a motion, second and a second? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Thank you, Rhonda.
Okay, thank you very much.
And next item, please.
Next item is Department Report, number 12, fiscal year 2018-2019, mid-year budget review.
Good evening, Mayor, whoop, did I turn my... Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Rhonda Rivera, Assistant City Manager over Administrative Services. And so I wanted to come back to you this evening and give just a quick update where we are, a little past midway through the fiscal year budget for 2018-2019, and then review with the city council the proposed budget calendar for the 1920 and 2021 budget cycles. Again, we propose going to the two-year budget cycle. So just as a little bit of a recap, the 1819 budget was adopted on May 24th, the total city budget is just under 60 million, and that would include our general fund, our only enterprise fund, which is solid waste, special revenue funds, and the capital funds. The adopted budget, the way that it was presented to council, our revenues total are about 31 million, expenditures just under 31 million, so that gave us an operating surplus of about $122,000. Now, the numbers that are on the screen, that excludes the $5.5 million in property tax that is still being maintained with this county of Sacramento under revenue neutrality. And so just to kind of give you a quick update where we were as of February 26th. So with our revenues, we were about 46% through the year, which is not uncommon, and that's because we receive our motor vehicle licensing tax twice a year, once about the first of February, and then once again in May. So we've only received half of that so far. And also with our sales tax, they run about two months behind, so we just received our December sales tax, I think it was the middle of February. And so with expenditures, on the other hand, those tend to stay pretty close on track, and so we're actually doing pretty good there. And looking at where we are right now, we are anticipating that the revenue will trend just slightly ahead of what we had budgeted, and for the expenditures, there are a few recommended adjustments, but it does, it does not have a net effect on the bottom line of the budget. It's just, because again, we estimate the budget more than a year in advance, and as it gets closer and reality comes to fruition of what we had anticipated, we have to make adjustments. But we're not talking about increasing the total overall bottom number, so it would stay exactly the same. And what we have proposed right now is sometime during the week of March 11th, we will have, hope to have a meeting with the finance committee, and then we will bring our updated recommendations to the city council at a following council meeting. And just to kind of go over quickly some of the other major funds and where they are. So with our gas tax, the revenue and expenditures are pretty much on track where they, where we had anticipated. Same with transit. Stormwater fund, the expenditures are a little bit low, but you did have an item before you this evening for the RINCONA, and that will bring that one more up along, along with what we're anticipating. Solid Waste Fund is on track, and so midway through the year, a little beyond that, we're looking pretty good, feeling pretty optimistic about where things are, and very appreciative of city manager, city council, and staff doing a great job bringing things forward. Now to kind of go over where we're looking at on the budget calendar. So right now, these, this is the proposed calendar, with March and April would be the budget preparation, this is when we meet with the directors, the departments, and get their estimates for the next two years. Then there would be the CIP presentation to the Planning Commission, it's right now planned for April 10th. April 25th, we would have the CIP study session and the community support study session with the city council. On May 9th, we would be doing the budget study session with the department presentations, and then on May 23rd, it's our intent to adopt the budget. Are there any questions?
Anybody? Nope. I think we're...
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is city manager items, and there are none. The next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Does anybody have any items you want to bring up for consideration? All right, seeing no one running forward, I believe that is our last item, so we are adjourned.
Oh, that was loud in my ear. Of course, you don't hold back.